...property taxes and then we will start with the final approvals for both of these items to be in place by October 1st. Are there any questions that I can answer? And I certainly want to encourage anyone that wants more information, there's a lot of great information. Our entire city budget is posted out at amarillo.gov.
Questions, Council? And the easy link on amarillo.gov, where's the easiest way to navigate to get to that budget?
Yes, sir. So if you go to amarillo.gov, if you scroll down to the bottom of the page, there's a section that says public notices. If you click on public notices, it's one of the first items that pops up. There's also some information about property taxes and how to calculate them and some of the impacts related to it.
Okay, really good. Anything further for Mrs. stores? Yes. Thank you, ma'am. At this time, I will open a public hearing on item 3B. Do I have anyone here who would like to speak for or against item 3B? Yes, sir. Mr. Fisher, if you can come forward.
I'm really not darn opinion of for or against, but like I just saw one item that came up on the screen where they're going to create a some kind of unsafe structure removal. Is that about five minutes? Is that how much that was?
Yeah, let's get you a little additional information. It's just a fund that goes into, I believe it's held in the city marshal's office so that they can remove hazardous structures. So we, once we condemn a structure, it becomes the taxpayer's obligation to go and tear that structure down. And so if we don't have any monies, then those structures just sit and they become crime, you know, potentialities and further hazards. So staff, Mr. City Manager, do you know offhand what that what that amount was that funded that dangerous structure?
Darby, can you get into that?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the exact amount was without going back and looking at those, but I can tell you a little more about the program. So that's going to be to get the equipment that it takes to do that in-house instead of hiring out contractors to the city for the residential areas where we have a pretty large backlog of dangerous structures that are out within our community. So that's the equipment, two personnel and solid waste to run the program, plus the person in the marshal's office as well to the administrative work for that. It's proactive approach to get us out there and getting some of these dangerous structures removed from, of course, that helps with the blight and other things in our community.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm just asking if you have any other questions on maybe what that money's going towards and then we can get you that exact amount. I don't remember the exact amount. I want to say it was five or $600,000 is what it equated to, but maybe I'm wrong.
I don't think that's correct.
No, we won't guess that.
Because I think it was under power. I think it was under power.
Let's go back then. City Secretary, can you scroll back to that presentation?
There's a bunch of boxes on the screen. I think it was something like that.
There's no bad.
Oh, I get that.
There's no bad. It just says new danger structure.
I don't know.
Look at the amount for Mr. Fisher.
I'm just, the one thing now I was thinking of is let's, let's give these first responders their raises. Let's give the city employees their raises. And I feel like those unsafe structures, that stuff would pay for itself because you're probably going to impound that land and you're going to sell it. So, and it seems like you could keep that all in one GL entry where you could, you sell the land and then it pays for equipment. But I feel like giving first responders their raises that you guys started with and city employees their raises, which they now have started with, is probably more important than creating something that's invasive and we're going to go rent over people's property. But if we do, I feel like that pays for itself by taking their property and selling it to make up for, because they're probably not going to have the money, so we're probably going to build the, you know, we're probably going to, I don't know what you guys call it when you take somebody's land from them to pay for whatever they owe, but it seems like it should pay for itself.
Yes, sir. So I, I think we may have a little additional information.
Yes, it was about 1.8 million in total with all of the equipment that is needed for it, as well as it is three additional solid waste employees. We have one new city marshal employee that's going to be helping kind of manage the project is, or I'm sorry, the properties as they come in. They will all go through a formal process. And as a reminder to council as well, these are being funded out of the increase to the solid waste fees to cover this.
So it is, I said taxpayer, I guess I should say rate payer, you know, this particular aspect. But there are other departments that do affect condemnation and blight and things like that that are funded through our tax rates. And so, Mr. Hoopie, has something you want to add?
Well, I would just say that we're already doing this program now, but we're hiring contractors to do the work. This is the most efficient way to do this apart from my concern. I created a program like this before when I was in camp and it was very successful. We were able to take down way more structures this way, get them in a safe position by using an internal program with internal staff rather than hiring contractors.
Right.
Go to Pam, look at Pam. I've been back there. I graduated from Pam. And that town is in terrible shape.
Councilman Tis, you had something you'd like to add?
Oh, I was just going to say, Mr. Fisher, most of these properties, when they are taken down, the property value is not that high to recoup the cost for this. So we've looked at all these numbers. I agree, you know, we want to be efficient on this. But the hazard that it increases with our first responders, the fires, that also are a hazard to the next four neighbors and spreading, that's one of the big reasons. So, I mean, tearing structures down is not just that cost. I'm trying to recoup that cost by the sale of that land, but it's also reducing, minimizing the hazard to surrounding citizens. So there's a lot that goes in this. It's not just cost and cost recovery. There's a whole lot of other in there. But to your point, the values of this property, of these, it's not a much of a, typically.
Yeah, and I would add to that. I think that we do see some benefits when we're taking these existing neighborhoods and these neighborhood organizations where they are coordinated, they're fundraising, they're, they're improving everything from parks, streetlights, sidewalks. There's all sorts of things that are going on. And when you leave a structure that somebody has abandoned, it just becomes a squatter's haven and they, they do inhabit it. It becomes a criminal element in that neighborhood. It causes people not to want to move into those neighborhoods or to...
I understand all that. That was just one thing that stood out. I'm sure there's a lot more. You know, we're adding more government is what we're talking about here. And we're not paying for the current government is what I'm saying. So if we could, that money keeps that morale up, keeps people here, keeps our employees here, creates consistency. 1.5%, I think was one of the raises. I mean, that's terrible.
We will, we will definitely agree. Thank you. We'll definitely agree on your willingness to pay some of our employees and staff and try to create the best organization we can. So we'll be working on that throughout this next year on the budget. Thank you, sir. Does anyone else we'd like to speak here at the public hearing? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing on item 3B and invite Mrs. Stores back up for item 3C.
Thank you, Mayor. On item 3C, this is a public hearing on a tax increase. And so as mentioned, if council approves a rate higher than the known new revenue tax rate, which would produce the exact same revenue as the prior year, then council is required to do a public hearing on the property tax increase. And so we would ask that council conduct a public hearing. We have put notice out in the newspaper to alert citizens that we would have a public hearing today. It's also posted on the city's website. As mentioned just a few minutes ago, we also have some really good information out on amarillo.gov related to property taxes that we would encourage citizens to look at. So I have a real brief presentation here on property taxes. Again, this states the same thing. A voter approval tax rate though is the highest tax rate that a council can approve without going to an election. Otherwise, mandatory elections required. We're already past those time points and council's not looking to consider that. And again, we must provide notice to our property owners and hold one public hearing. And again, this slide is not working out great, so I apologize. It works out great on a computer, but apparently not on these screens. So what this slide shows is that our current property tax rate is 38.723 cents and our proposed tax rate is set at the voter approval tax rate of 43.070 cents. What that gets us is our current service levels here at the city and additional police officer and firefighter, continued funding of fire for fire apparatus, helping to fund a 4% raise for police, a 3% raise for fire, and a 2% raise for civilians. This is also going to help pay for street projects and for the TRS 20%, I'm sorry, 70% code for retirees. What this means on our, for our taxpayers, if a citizen had a residential property that was $100,000 last year or in the current year and it's going, and it was appraised at the same $100,000 again, they would be looking at a $4 per month increase and that's just on the city's portion of the tax bill. On an average home though, however, average homes are about 278,000 or so here in our community across Potter and Randall. They would see an $11 per month increase on an average home. The reason for that is, as a citizen mentioned earlier, Potter-Randle appraisal district is in charge of doing the appraisals on all of our properties in both Potter and Randall. That's a separate third party group that does those. The city has no authority over them or ability to, to influence any of their decisions. They do a separate appraisal and appraisal values have gone up overall by about 3% year over year. I do note that there are some properties in Amarillo that did see a decrease in those appraised values. So it's kind of a mixture across the community this year. But if an average, or I'm sorry, an average home did see, will see about an $11 per month increase and that's related to our property tax rate, but also those values increasing about 3% year over year. Again, we do have a lot of information out on amarillo.gov if citizens have questions about their property taxes. So what we are asking council to do today is to conduct a public hearing. And in here just a minute, we will have council take a second and final vote on the property tax rate. And then we will have a final item to actually ratify the tax rate. Are there any questions that I can answer on property taxes?
Questions, Council? Oh, ma'am, thank you. At this time, I'm going to open a public hearing on item 3C. Do I have anyone who would like to speak for or against item 3C? Mr. Fisher, come back up. We could get you a microphone.
Yeah, just sit there in my seat. Really, it's just one quick question. The last time we had a meeting, we were asking about the public notice. And we looked it up and we can't find a public notice anywhere on blue amarillo.com.
Specifically, you're asking whether we issued a public notice in the Amarillo Globe News?
She said the newspaper. I suspect it's the Blue Globe News.
Okay. Yeah, Mrs. Stores, do you mind to address that?
Yes, I believe the property tax notice was published on September 6th and the budget public hearing notice was published on September 4th. And I have copies of both of those newspapers.
Is it only in print or is it online?
I would imagine it's online.
Because we don't find it online anywhere. I had several people look, had Chap look and...
Do you mind, just because I know that's a legal requirement, I'd like to be able to produce that. So like, be good to pull that paper that you have that shows the notes?
Yes, we can. We can certainly look into that.
And if it's online, because they're, they're, I think they're moving their printing to Mexico or something. I mean, that newspaper, there's probably 10 copies when you look at one at a store. So I'm wondering if we're avoiding technicalities here. I say it's in the paper.
Sure. Yeah, so Mrs. Stores, can you speak to the legal requirement of how we have to notice that and why it's only allowed to be noticed in a newspaper?
Yes, and so the other part of that requirement is that it is, it has to be posted on the city's website. So it's posted down on our public notice section on the city's website. But there, I think they have, several groups have tried to get the requirement changed where it doesn't have to post in a newspaper anymore. I think to your point, there's not a whole lot of newspapers may be, you know, circulating around as much, but it is still a requirement. And so we did need the requirement to post in the newspaper and on the city's website. But I can certainly research the newspapers. No, I'm sorry.
My question is, is it required to be online also? Because that's where everybody's reading the newspapers. What I'm, does that include being...
I'd have to ask our legal counsel on the newspaper side. It is on the city's website though, online. Yeah. All right, we'll look into it.
The way, the way I understand it, you can speak to it if you want to, but we're required to post it and to put it in the newspaper. Now, the form that the newspaper uses to circulate in any community is online now as well as an actual hard copy newspaper. We've got that here. So, Mrs. City Secretary, is that what went into the paper itself?
Yes.
Yes, this is one of the two. And this one, let me scroll up. That was posted on September 2nd?
Okay, yes.
Is that an online that you're looking at or is that the...
This is the Amarillo Globe News online website, yes, sir.
Okay, we'll check it out. Will you come up for a second or we get a picture?
Not sure why you couldn't find it, but I appreciate the question and due diligence. We want to make sure we follow every rule. Yes, sir, appreciate it. Do I have anyone else here who'd like to offer a public comment? Oh, I'm sorry, not a public comment, but to speak here at this public hearing. Mr. Feingold?
The percentage of taxes that can be put on property in the city of Amarillo, percentage of valuation?
So we can get you an answer to that, but you're asking a Pratt question. It's in the way that the particular properties are appraised, what is the maximum increase of value in one year?
What's the maximum percentage as, a maximum percentage of the assessment of the property? Is there any upper limit on that percentage?
I wanted to clarify, it's an assessment of the property value that you're questioning, not the tax rate that you're questioning.
It's both.
Okay, well, let's address them separately because they have two sets of rules. So do you want to speak to the assessment on the property?
I can talk to the tax rate. I believe our charter states that the maximum tax rate the city can levy is $1.50. And we're at 43.070 cents. And I'm looking over bright, I believe that's right. So the charter only, state law allows a local government to go to $2.50, but our local city charter caps that at $1.50.
As a tax rate?
Yeah, as a city's portion of the tax rate.
Now, we can only move in 3.5% on the M and O, maintenance and operations side of the budget, without it going for an election, without it being put to the voter. But within that, it could be put to the voter all the way up to $1.50 is what you're saying?
Yes.
In one year?
Thank you. I'm going to make a suggestion to you. You lower that to no more than 50 cents for 100 elements of appraised value. Thanks.
We appreciate the recommendation for a charter amendment. Mrs. Kelsey, if I could have you come up and you speak next.
I have some comments and actually a question for Mrs. Stores. So when she was referring to some areas in Amarillo that have actually seen a decrease in property values, I don't know what areas those would be because even a property that we have in San Jacinto was, excuse me, let me find it. From 2020 to 2025, it's suggested increase in value was a walking 349%. So like I was saying earlier, again, the burden of proof falls on the homeowners and only, you know, 7 to 10% of people are actually going through the hassle of protesting that. So I'm not sure what neighborhoods Mrs. Stores was referring to of lower values, but on all of the ones that I have here in my hand, they range from 46 to 349% increases in assessed value for the past five years. So my question was, is the circuit breaker, I think the previous gentleman was asking or referring to this, there's a 20% cap on any investment properties, not on homestead properties, that they can increase by 10% for homestead. So my question for Mrs. Stores is, is the circuit breaker law or cap that's expiring in 2027, is that also not under the jurisdiction of the city? Is that completely controlled by Pratt?
That's a great question and they are two totally separate entities, so we'll let Mrs. Stores speak to that.
Yes, that's a great question. Yeah, that is something that appraisal districts are required to follow according to state law. So that's, we are, we have to follow state law according to the same property tax rates and they have to follow state law for doing the appraisals of the properties. So yeah, that's, that's Pratt.
So when that expires, that's not under the city's jurisdiction at all? That wasn't part of Pratt?
Yes. Yeah, that's their portion of the state law that they have to follow. Yes. It doesn't affect what we do because they, they give those values to us based on what state law will allow. As you mentioned, for homestead exemptions right now, it can't increase more than 10%. I think it is each year. But Pratt has to follow those state law requirements and then they give us the values to assess our taxes off of based on those that are set out of state law.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just wondering, you control that? That would be that law. Yeah, in our area, it would be Pratt.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, as I stated before, my, my motion was for or against this increase just simply because it doesn't just affect the homeowners. It is going to affect the tenants that rent because, you know, if a homeowner wants to be able to afford, you know, the mortgage, the taxes and the increasing insurance over here, of course, we're going to pass on that cost most of the time. And it also affects, you know, small businesses too that have triple net commercial properties. They have to continue to protest their property tax increases and paying inventory taxes and other tax on tax on tax. So it's just kind of a compounding effect when you have the proposed increase from the city budget portion of it. And then also Pratt is, to my knowledge, to my limited knowledge, not in the business of lowering any values unless you protest it yourself. So it's just a compounded effect of the increase on the taxes.
And Mrs. Morgan, I don't believe we have any anecdotal evidence as to, you know, what properties around town, what neighborhoods they would have belonged in, but in a typical year, you do see properties increase in value and you do see some properties that decrease. So over the previous two years, council lowered your tax rate, but still increased your taxes on the revenues because we saw values increase so much. So $350,000 house became a $450,000 house on average. So it's very important, I think, to reiterate that we're a taxing entity and that you need that separation from the appraising entity so that those two are not cajoined. And I think the common public perception is that we, we set your tax rate and your value. We are not in the valuation side of things at all. It does affect us in adjusting that rate. But this year is the year that you see, well, now that, you know, appraisal values have steadied or leveled some, yours are obviously still going up, that you're seeing that rate continue to climb accordingly with the additional needs that every municipality has. But very good set of questions and if we need to answer any more here before we move forward, glad to do that.
Yeah, and I do appreciate learning the distinction now that between the Pratt being a completely different entity. So that's a separate issue on its own, so thank you.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Do I have anyone else here who would like to speak at this public hearing? Okay, seeing nobody, I'm going to close the public hearing on item 3C and would have Mrs. Stores come back up for item 3D.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 3D is consideration of ordinance number 8218 adopting the city of Amarillo budget for the 2025-2026 fiscal year. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance adopting the city budget and this budget allows the city to continue providing effective public services programs and assistance to Amarillo residents in the upcoming tax year. And I would recommend there's, there should be motion language at your spots. State law outlines motion language to use for an item like this and that it be a record vote as well. Any questions I can answer?
Any questions, Council? We appreciate the reminder. So it's a formal legal action that we'll take here on item 3D. Council, do I have any discussion on item 3D? Okay, would request a motion.
I move to adoption of ordinance number 8218 adopting the budget for the fiscal year October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2026 for the city of Amarillo. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes with a 5-0 vote. Mrs. Stores, item 3E, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 3E is consideration of ordinance number 8219 approving the city of Amarillo tax rule, setting an admirable and property tax rate and levying a tax on all properties subject to taxation within the city for the 2025 tax year. So this is a second and final reading on the tax rate. And as a reminder, it is proposed at the 43.070 rate. And again, there should be motion language at your spots. This is another one that state law outlines kind of the formality on the motion language and if you will also take a record vote on this, we would appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions, Council, for item 3E? Any discussion? Would entertain a motion.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by adoption of a tax rate of 0.4307 cents, which is effectively a 15.30% increase in the tax rate.
Second. Have a motion and a second on item 3E. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes with a 5-0 vote. Item 3F, Mrs. Stores?
Yes, sir. So this is the last item I'm going to ask y'all to act upon related to the tax rate and the budget for this upcoming year. This is the ratification of local government code section 102.007C. The city council is required to take a separate ratification vote on the tax rate when the adopted budget requires more property tax revenue than the previous year's budget did. So again, there is motion language at your spots and if you could please use that and do a record vote on this one and then y'all can celebrate being done with budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Mrs. Stores on the ratification process? Okay, would entertain a motion.
I move that we ratify the budget and tax rate that's adopted for fiscal year 2025 and 2026. Recognizing such budget will require more revenue from property taxes than in the budget adopted last year.
Second. Have a motion and a second on item 3F. All in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes with a 5-0 vote. Council, I would give a remark here that is just my opinion and no one else's, but unless we abolish property taxes, we're always going to go in this direction. And so for the, you know, public comments that, you know, we're growing government and continue, we're growing a city. And as you grow a city and family and business budgets do increase, but we as a state of Texas are growing faster than any other state and we do so without a state income tax, which if you ask any other state that's charging an income tax, maybe California, they would tell you there's no way to ever run the government without that. But we do it year in and year out. And so if we had a true consumption tax here, we would be the state to compete with in the state of Texas. So like, I think that property taxes are going to continue to get more and more constricted and more and more limited in their actual abilities to be that steady form of revenue and it severely limits our abilities to provide services that you request and tell us to. And then I would just remind everybody, we always have the option to remove city services. So it's not growing government as much as it is at the local level removing the city services. And so if you guys feel free to continue to let us know which city services you'd like to remove and then show us that there is not a negative consequence to that. So like an example of... So like an example of...